Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council held this Monday, December 19th, 2022. We're in council chambers and this meeting's being livestreamed on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM. Because of the New Year's Day holiday, the next meeting will be on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. Mr. Paul, would you please call the roll? And before I let you, I will tell you all that Mr. Cavan had contacted me late last week to say he would not be able to make it and sent his regrets. Take away Mr. Paul if you would, please.
So Mr. Cavan is absent. Ms. Knappick, here. Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
Ms. Warden?
Here.
We do have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I would ask you to stand and join the city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will look for a motion to approve the minutes of the December 5th, 2022 meeting.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Ansel, second by Mr. Sanders. All in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The December 5th, 2022 minutes have been approved. Welcome, Mr. Mayor, on what should be the last meeting of 2023, or 2022, as we roll into 2023. So look forward to another conclusion of another good year and beginning of a great year in 2023.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke, and I definitely agree with those comments for the future years. I'm just going to start out and really in relation to the meeting that just finished earlier, that there are no changes in the bed tax allocation for 2023. City council have approved then, two weeks ago, or I'm sorry, two meetings ago, Resolution 2022-51 on November 11th, awarding, for the awarding in 2023. So I know there were people confused on that, so that was more for their purposes. The bed tax formula was started 20 years ago when councils passed the award for in 2003. This year's appropriation are exactly the same percentage in people as put in place 20 years ago. So that is, the bed tax form has lived a good life. Might be interesting to tweak it a little bit, but hopefully we can keep that moving with the same goodwill each time.
That we have. I see I'm being tweaked a little bit.
Technical difficulties, I was turning the mic on.
Thank you, sir. The proposals in the 2023 appropriation budget narrative on page 1-14 to 1-16 are for discussion purposes for possible changes in the 2024 budget. So we're going to have conversations with folks hopefully through the 2023 year and come up with good resolutions for something to be passed hopefully in the fall of next year. Administration's recommendation is to pass the budget tonight so that we take advantage of discounts available this year and then amend the budget next year when funding decisions are settled, in example, with WEDC. So hopefully council is amenable to moving that direction tonight with the budget. I want to say congratulations to Matt Fisher and Scott Rotolo and our Worcester Police Department for being named Ohio's Best Agency of the Month for December 2022 by the Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police. This organization put out a publication called Sharing Ohio's Best Program: Recognizing Outstanding Community Policing. So Matt and Scott, nice job, gentlemen, and you and your team, that's a pretty nice honor to get out of the state agency there. So. We received notice today that Worcester has been awarded a $775,000 Brownfield remediation grant from the Ohio Department of Development. The grant is to be used in cleaning up the Tire Center Incorporated site on Liberty Street just east of Bell Avenue. Jonathan Malley and Joel Montgomery really were the drivers of that grant application, and Jonathan is really our grant writer and for this one-time opportunity to clean up the site for development, or for redevelopment. So thank you, Jonathan and Joel, for all your efforts in making that happen. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joel. He has a couple announcements he'd like to make, and then I'll finish with a final comment.
Hopefully you find this interesting. We just finished our leaf pickup today for the year, and Kurt Denning, our PPM manager, sent some stats that I thought were interesting. There were times during our first round, we got up to about 10 days behind schedule. The primary reason for that is we had sort of a record year in the number of leaves that fell before Thanksgiving this year. That's not always the case. So to give you an example, we had, last year, there were 200, I'm sorry, in 2020, there were 400, let me take it back, 2021, there were 254 loads before Thanksgiving, 371 loads after, for a total of 625 loads. This year, there were 468 loads before Thanksgiving and only 257 after, for a total of 725. So the bulk of those, so that's just before and after Thanksgiving. You have first round, second round. In '21, there was 190 loads first round, 435 second round, total of 625. We had 600 loads in the first round and then only 123 in the second. So they got behind by 10 days, but that's because they were basically doing two rounds of work in the first round and ended up just about on time. We had almost the same amount of total loads in the first round as we did all of last year for both rounds. So they did a really good job, averaged about five more loads per day as they were running to try to keep up. So they just, they did a really good job this year, kept up with things, and they just finished today, so they're happy to be done with leaf. The only other thing I wanted to point out is if you looked in your utility bill, you would have seen this, the last utility bill you got. And I just wanted to highlight a couple things about the next season, now that we're done with leaf season, which will be salting and plowing, just to point out for, you know, for the public, that the reason why you don't see plows out right away is we typically don't plow until there's at least two inches of snow. Because it's just not productive for us to try to plow with less than two inches. You will see us beginning to spread de-icers out there to get a layer of brine on the pavement, but not until it exceeds two inches do we start plowing. And at that point, we always start on the most highly traveled streets first. That's why if you're on a residential street, you might not see everybody out there right away, because they're starting on all the main roads, which are the main ones that your police, fire, emergency services have to, you know, have to use to access where they need to go. That's why those are first, and then the second part is your minor streets. And say all that to say, there's also tweaks to that depending on the snow event. So there's some pretty detailed planning that happens. We know event's coming. The crew gets down and they plan that out, depending on how long it's going to last, because we only have so many trucks and so many people, and that's it. We don't have, you know, 24-hour crews. So we'll plan that out and try to hit the worst of it with all of our crews for as long as they can. At some point, they have to go sleep for a little bit before they come back out again. So I just wanted to point out, there is a lot of thought and prep behind how we address our salting and plowing operations. With that, just be careful, you know, if it starts snowing or icy, especially, I think we're supposed to get here at the end of this week, so we will get to it. And we were out twice here in the last few days, salting with the snow and sort of icy weather we had.
And finally, I just want to take time to say thank you to all of you in city council. You've done an amazing job for our city again this year. You know, we've done a lot of good things in moving our city forward, and it takes a lot of time. You are here many of our nights together until easily 9:30, 10 o'clock, or later. So it's not something that you sign up for lightly, and it does take responsibility and conscious to move the city forward. So thank you for everything you do for our city. You definitely have made a difference. So with that, I wish you all a happy holiday season and a Merry Christmas. Please enjoy the holiday with your family and friends, and we will see you all next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. I don't think we have any petitions, nor do we have any communications from the public, unless I've missed someone. We do have a committee report. Mr. Sanders, you had hopefully the last of the finance committees for 2022, so I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. Yes, we did have a committee report for finance, and I think the hot topic this fiscal year, or for '23, was the economic development. Everything else seemed to be fairly straightforward. And like you say, we allowed the community, or like you said, the finance committee discussed it here this evening. The community had one comment, and at this point, we'll be looking forward to moving that legislation on here shortly. And with that...
All right. Nice segue, because that takes us to unfinished business, which happens to be your, in essence, budget or appropriation for 2023. Before I get to you, I will ask Mr. Paul to please read the title.
Ordinance Number 2022-33: An Ordinance Appropriating From Various Funds to Individual Accounts For the Current Expenses and Other Expenditures For the City of Worcester for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31st, 2023, and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we have discussed over the last three meetings, we've discussed the budget for 2023. It's very, we're spending some money this year. We've got a fire truck, we've got a fire station, we've got a number of improvements that are going to be made to our wastewater plant and also our water plant. And again, these are things that we have to do, and I think overall, the community's going to be happy that we do, because at the end of the day, those are the things that we need to make sure to keep our in operation. We're going to continue with street paving next year, and fortunately, we've done, the road crews, the city crews have done a very good job, you know, with where we are with street repairs. I know a few years ago, everybody was, a lot, number of complaints, and now it's, it's pretty smooth sailing for most of the part. So the only, like you say, again, the only thing that was really a point of discussion was the change or the new direction with economic development. And ultimately, with that, there will be, we will have the opportunity to make changes. I mean, right now, the only change that we would potentially make would be to WEDC funding, which at that point, we will discuss after the first of the year and after they provide us with what conversation or with the dollar amount that they want to talk about and services they'll provide. And at that point, we can handle that through a resolution at that juncture. So with that, I would motion to adopt ordinance 2022-33.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Does this horse need to be beaten any further?
Yes, I'd like just to make a comment. I want to compliment the finance committee for their diligence and hard work, and the administration for an exceptional budget presentation. Ms. Knappick and Mr. Myers are also serving on that finance committee. It is a record level of capital investment that we talked about for this city, and it's reassuring to have the wherewithal and the financial solvency to be able to make those ongoing improvements. So thank you for a job well done. Yeah, there was a little bit of issue with the economic funding, future discussions, but all change and resets are positive in terms of continuous improvement and refocusing on how those dollars are being invested and the return on behalf of the city and the taxpayers of Worcester. So it's always a bit controversial change, perpetuates those type of controversies and emotions, but it's all healthy for growth and future prosperity. So again, kudos to the finance committee and the administration for a job well done. Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, Mr. President, I would repeat Ms. Ansel's remarks. Thank you to the finance committee, particularly Mr. Sanders, for ironing through those problems. I do look forward to the conversation in 2023 and the administration's commitment to having those discussions with our partners. I heard some comments, and I think we probably all heard a lot of the same comments, that these changes might be a reflection of somehow dissatisfaction with our partners or with the current system. And, you know, I think that's a mistaken reading on their part. You know, I applaud the administration for looking at ways we could possibly do this better, and I'm open to that idea. Is, you know, not that the current system is bad, but is there a way we can spend that money better and get more impact with our dollars? And I'm, maybe not. Maybe the current system is what we come back to, but I'm certainly willing to listen to alternatives, so.
Saying nothing further, Mr. Paul, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Reynolds?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2022-33 passes, and congratulations, Mr. Sanders, on delivering your first budget as chairman of the finance committee.
Well timed.
That brings us to ordinance Number 2022-39. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds. Before I get to you, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Paul, would you please read the title?
Ordinance Number 2022-39: An Ordinance Amending Chapter 162 Management Benefits of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke. Currently, we have a limitation in hiring administrative employees that only allows us to look at years of public service and deciding seniority for benefits. And this would remove that and allow the person's hiring to look at both private and public service. In today's day of very competitive hiring, we feel this is necessary to give us an opportunity to get the best qualified candidates to the city. I would like to make, I will make a motion to move this to third and final reading, so we can have this in place for the first of the year, because there could be a possibility of some openings at that time that this may come into play.
All right. Motion by Mr. Reynolds to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds, do you have another motion?
I do. I move the adoption of ordinance Number 2022-39.
Motion by Mr. Reynolds to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any discussion? I think your remarks are exactly the reason for this, is to get the best people possible. And like we use incentives in, for businesses, we need incentives to attract the quality people.
Mr. Reynolds, my comment for the administration is, you know, you've successfully hired, what, 40-some people here in the last years without this? So, you know, maybe you don't need it, but I'm just joking. I support this. Congratulations on your hiring practices and continue the good work.
I also think this is, this shows foresight, because what we're looking at with the new changes in the overall economy, we're finding a lot of the younger people are looking more at quality of life as opposed to dollars and salary. So they're looking to, how many vacation days can I get? How can I spend my time with my family? As opposed to being willing to work 80 hours a week for a big salary. So I think this is, this shows foresight on the side of the city, and I also favor it.
And it goes with our philosophy of being a family-friendly community.
Exactly.
And the city as an employer ought to be the same way. Saying nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Knappick?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2022-39 passes. We have three items under new business. We'll be turning to Mr. Sanders again, but first, would you please read ordinance, the title of ordinance Number 2022-40?
Ordinance Number 2022-40: An Ordinance Amending the Annual Appropriation Ordinance and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
And I'll remind you, Mr. Sanders, although you probably need no reminding, this is set for three readings. So I turn the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is one of the benefits from the opioid settlement, we have the ability to utilize part of this money to provide a health and wellness, a first responder health and wellness app for our law enforcement and fire through Lexipol. The app provides confidential support, content for the families of the first responders, and the hope with the use of this is that health and wellness tool can help the first responders and their families deal with job-related stress and emotional issues that can often occur from dealing with critical events. And with the process of this, we're getting a little bit of a discount. So, I mean, the total opioid fund is approximately $35,000 a year for the next 15 years, but in this particular case, these two items, as we see in the legislation, is roughly $13, $13,000. So at that point, I think this is a great use of that money. We definitely want to have our police and fire people the best they can be. And with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Mr. Paul, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ordinance Number 2022-40: An Ordinance Amending the Annual Appropriation Ordinance and Allowing for Immediate Enactment. Oh, wait, sorry. Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Yes.
I...
Did you, could quite figure out what I was doing there, couldn't you?
Well, I knew what was going on, but you were so enthusiastic, I couldn't throw water on your enthusiasm.
Just shifted into second there, that's all.
Mr. Sanders, do you have another motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Holy cow. I think I heard Ms. Warden, so we'll give it to Ms. Warden. Any further discussion? You know, we always want to take care of our safety forces, and it sounds like an appropriate expenditure of money.
I just wanted to point out that this also means that if we can get this done, it locks in a 40% discount for, for this processes procedure for, for the life of when we have it and use it, which is really a good deal. And I'd also like to say that having gone through the Citizens Academy, I get to see a little bit of the stress that the families and the first responders are, are subject to, and it's, it's not a job for the faint of heart, nor is being the spouse or family member of one of those first responders for the faint of heart either. So I think this is an excellent use of the opioid funds, and we thank you folks and your families as well.
Saying nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Myers?
Definitely, yes.
Ordinance Number 2022-40 passes. This will bring us to Resolution Number 2022-62. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. This is the Sanders and Reynolds show, I guess, this evening. This one's budgeted, so will not require suspension of rules, but does require me to have Mr. Paul read the title, and she can read it twice if she so chooses.
Resolution Number 2022-62: A Resolution Authorizing the Director of Administration to Purchase a Ladder Truck and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
Chief Saley tells me this ladder truck is bigger than the one we put in to service a couple of years ago, so. And he guarantees at least 25 years' usage of it, and I was trying to get him to guarantee it'd stay during its tire useful life, but he declined. But anyways, we need it, and it's nothing, and whatever equipment we use, no matter what department, we take good care of it and get maximum usage out of it. So, Mr. Sanders?
The floor is mine?
You are, yeah. The floor is yours.
Excellent. Well, this is pretty cool. I've always wanted to spend $1.6 million or something. I just hadn't planned on it being a fire truck. I was thinking more of my Class A motorhome, but okay. But in any event, this is for the new, the new 100-foot ladder truck that, our other one is currently a 1997, so I think in light of the fact that it still looks really good, but it definitely has provided itself with a very useful life for our community, and at this point, it's time to reinvest in the next 25-year vehicle. In light of the fact that we have 24- to 26-month lead time, once we order this thing, it makes sense to go ahead and do this now, that, and the fact that we've already budgeted for it, as we've already approved previously, so we can do that. But in approving this this evening, it does allow us, A, to get it ordered, and B, to save at least $66,000, assuming they get all the paperwork filled out and get the contract signed tomorrow. And like you say, I mean, we've, we've talked about this as, as a council, we've talked about this, you know, potentially what we're going to need to do with this truck for a couple of years, and I feel bad that I got to do this, and Mr. Cavan didn't. But in any event, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers?
I've got a question. Mr. Scavelli, do we not have to suspend the rules in order for this to take effect immediately in order to place this order? Because isn't there a 30-day delay if we don't suspend the rules?
Uh, yes.
So should we not back up and suspend the rules so that they can order this thing?
So, in this case, it, we have it down as budgeted because, but it's not, so we just passed the 2023 budget, so it's budgeted. So, no, you don't need to.
Okay.
Now, this will fit into your new fire station?
Correct.
Okay. With the additional length, we don't want it, like, sticking out in the weather.
No, we're actually, one of the reasons for the redesign is making the doors bigger because of the width of the new fire trucks are just getting wider as well, as well. So the enhancements of the runway of the station will allow it to fit nicely.
Great.
Okay, I got to ask, how are they getting wider? They can only be eight feet, six inches wide, so how are they getting wider?
Well, the outriggers and everything else that hangs on it, and...
But they still can only be eight feet, six inches wide.
In comparison to the older units, they are getting wider. In comparison to the older units, they are getting wider.
Okay. All righty. No worries.
Don't wipe anybody off the roof.
Seeing nothing further, Mr. Paulo, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022, or resolution number 2022-62 passes. Hopefully, our last piece of legislation for 2022 is ordinance number 2022-41. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It is slated for three readings. Mr. Paulo, hopefully for the last time, will you read an ordinance here in 2020, calendar year 2022?
Ordinance number 2022-41, an ordinance authorizing annexation of municipally-owned property contiguous to the existing corporation limits pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 709, and authorizing the director of law to prosecute the proceedings necessary to affect it and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke. This is very similar to what we did just a couple of meetings ago on Oak Hill. This involves property on Melrose and involves two pieces of property that are within the roadway. The bigger piece is 41 thousandths of an acre. The smaller one is 21 thousandths of an acre, and I think I'm just ballparking this. I wish, I wish I had Mr. Kobelarsek here to check me on this. I think the combination of the two is about the size of this room. This just sets the annexation in motion or gives Mr. Scavelli the ability to start the ball rolling on that. We will see it again when it works its way back through here. And again, this just seeks to give him the authority to begin that process. And with that, I would make a motion to suspend the rules and move this to third and final reading.
All right. Mr. Reynolds has moved to suspend the rules, or, yes, and is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the role on the suspension of the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mr. Reynolds?
I would move for the adoption of ordinance number 2022-41.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Myers, I heard you first, so Mr. Myers, second it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-41 passes. I don't think anyone's here to speak on behalf of the public, so it's, will be council's turn. But just let me say once again, it's been an honor and privilege to preside over this august body and work with all the fine individuals that make up this council, and I couldn't be prouder to serve with you and call you my fellow council people. And I look forward to doing the same in 2023, and thank you for tolerating me yet again for another year. And Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, or whatever celebration you are going to have, and I hope whatever it is, it's joyous, peaceful, and safe. Ms. Knappich, we'll give you the first word on the, as we are about to embark on the holidays.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Just wanted to congratulate, again, the, the police chief and his department for their award. That was amazing and wonderful. And, and commend the people for the city who picked up the leaves. I know that's been a pain this year. And just second what the council president said as far as wishing everyone a happy holiday season, whatever holiday it is that you celebrate. Please be safe.
Mr. Myers?
Well, I want to go first in comments, because those are the things I wanted to say.
I think everyone has the same.
The same comments? Okay. Ditto. Thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
I want to thank, again, I want to thank the Mills administration again for the budget. Like you say, when you look at what we get to review annually, I mean, the reporting is, is top-notch. You don't see this very many places and very, you know, other areas are just directly around us. I mean, it's appalling what we get compared to what we look at here. So, this is fantastic. Again, thank you for all the hard work and for all the division managers and the time spent in terms of deliberating what's good, what's bad, what's necessary. So, thank you. I also want to thank Mr. Ansel, who, when he left council, he was planning on his beach vacation and retirement, and when Mr. Silvestri found himself leaving the community, we, we ran, we literally wrestled Mr. Ansel back into coming back on the council. And candidly, I selfishly wanted him to be here so we could go through this budget this year, so he could have his tutelage again to process through this with as much ease as possible. So, thank you, and to all Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next year.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes, it's a sincere pleasure to be re-engaged with council, and thank you, Mr. Sanders, for the acknowledgement, and thank you, administration, for your diligence in persuading me to re-engage. I appreciate being back on the team and look forward to a productive 2023. And without reiterating all the, the kudos and compliments, I also want to have a special highlight to Jonathan Malley and the outstanding effort in securing three-quarters of a million-dollar remediation grant for one of the city's last remaining ISOs in the downtown corridor, and it was problematic, and it's been interesting on Worcester Grove to see that proceed and progress. But the real formalization is when you get the cash from the state in, in terms of a grant. So, a marvelous and significant, you know, accomplishment. Thank you, Jonathan. Served the citizens well in the administration, and they've made great progress. It looks better already. So, thank you, and Happy Holidays. Best wishes to everyone. Thank you. Merry Christmas, and see you in 2023.
Ms. Warden?
There's not a lot to say after all this, so, yeah, just Happy Holidays to everyone, and be safe and merry, and I guess we'll see you next year.
And Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke. I do have something new to add, because I had a different perspective than everyone else, because in one way or another, this is all old hat to the rest of you. Some of you came back, some of you have been here all along. From the outside looking in, you know, I knew that this is a good group, and I knew you did quite a bit of work, and I knew it was high-quality work, but after having spent a year doing this, I got to say, I'm even more impressed with, with the group, with the city administration and the quality of the work that gets done. Again, I've only got one year to measure this by, but you look back and what got accomplished in 2022 by the administration, by the council, we had a big year. At least, to me, it's the only year I've had, so I have nothing else to compare it to. Okay? So, you may feel differently. The old timers may feel a little bit differently about this, but I think a lot got accomplished, and I think there's a lot to be proud of. And again, it's, look forward to 2023 and doing it all again.
Thank you. Before I get to adjournment, I'd be very amiss not to recognize our clerk of council, Mr. Paulo, for making my life very easy, and without her, this job would be very difficult. So, thank you for all your efforts, and I appreciate it, and special holiday greetings to you and your family.
Thank you.
Mr. Biden-Dyke, if I could?
Sure.
I'd like to thank Andre Gordia and the finance team for all their hard work in putting the budget together. I didn't want to say that earlier because I was scared I'd jinx it happen. So, I appreciate you letting me have that time, and the congratulations to our finance team.
With that, I would make the motion to adjourn final council session for 2022.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Ansel, and second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.